Welcome to the SAVI Franklin continuous of the public hearing for Articles eight and fourteen. We left off at the last meeting and we planned on continuing this with a more polite comment discussion on the proposed changes to his own here. I can turn it over to Barry if you like, Barry?
Actually, I will have Fred kind of try maybe this, he's the primary text guy here. But I guess we can do as any form of questions, particularly kind of foreign questions and concerns and have a discussion on that one.
Trying to get everything from my notes from the last public hearing, try to address all those. We also addressed additional questions. There was a question, I don't know if you know those, one was if you received an additional copy of things that were existing at today and if someone, for example, like a chicken who didn't need the setbacks, would we require them to move that? So we added, we had some keeping them. I'm sorry? That wasn't here. Grandfather law. It should have been, here it is, unless previously approved. So in there, coops must be not no closer than fifteen feet to any lot line or public driveway, unless previously approved by the city prior to the approval date of this amendment. So is there prior to the amendment date, we can have that. Also, what I'd say is that if you have any type of shed or structure, because those are all structures, they're accessory buildings, that is there today, they're legal non-conforming use. So they would, no matter what. So we just, just to be on the safe side with the chicken coops, we put that.
I'm raising it there.
And we also did that with semi-trailers. There was a question about the semi-trailers.
Sorry you made that, the semi-trailers can't be used for actual storage, they can park and not be stored.
Correct. And then we also...
Would that language referring to the chickens, that being the same for beehives and stuff like that as well?
Well, I guess the question with the beehives is, is that typically those are movable anyway, I think, so you could be on that. Now, Barry, as the zoning administrator, has the ability to, and we have built in the code since some of these tables, that if it's to make a decision on something like that, you know, if somebody didn't have beehive there for ten kilometers and it's three feet off, he can say, yeah, we can continue doing that.
So I think it's kind of a common sense thing. If I have, if I have like a bee allergy, let's say, and I live next door to somebody that has a bee hive right on the line, I mean, obviously that's a common sense thing that those bees could hurt or kill someone. So I mean, we have to kind of weigh every case on its own merit. So I think those safeguards are in there that will, maybe okay.
We also had a question, solar panels about fifteen foot requirements, and we knew that going in, that there were going to be some things with solar panels. You have an industry that's changing quickly, and so we already had in there, ground out of solar, that other state of the yard ground out of solar applications, even other code and industry standards may be permitted with approval of the zoning administrator. That was already in there, because we anticipated, you know, I know right now, I see there's a roof in the area, because it advertises on TV, the shingle, solar shingles. And so things like that, that if somebody came in from permanent, they wanted that there, and said that needs some standard in your table. So we do allow that already. So I looked at the fifteen foot, we've not about making changes to that, and said it's already in there. The zoning administrator can make that decision, we can call that state of the yard.
I have twenty-six panels on my roof at all times, so upgraded version of solar energy. I do think, though, that you don't want solar panels on a frame in a front yard, you know, I just don't think neighbors would like that, but if they're in the backyard, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
So I also went through the tables, and I made sure that the sections matched up. And Terry had a question before the meeting, it actually is there, it's for festivals and things like that and food travel.
We was on that same page.
So we had references, I said, I have that written down on, but so I checked all the references, and I think we had everything up. Sometimes you'll find something that isn't. That Terry had a question about food trailers, CD eight hundred point three, one C, that is at the end of the page, several sections will be used in conjunction with local events. So we had qualified it there. We, on page ninety-three, residential outdoor storage requirements, there was some confusion on that, we talked about it in yellow on the top there, we took out, we took out, it says outdoor storage and accessory recreational vehicles, boat trailers, or commercial vehicles, set up part of aisle on driveways and front yards, handed rear and side yards with a minimum setback of ten feet on corner lots, storage shall be behind inside building while adjacent street. I think that was the question we had. So I rephrased it and said, basically that outdoor storage and accessory recreational vehicles, boat trailers, or commercial vehicles are unprohibited in front yards except for driveways. And then new sentence, outdoor storage is allowed in rear and side yards for the ten foot property on setbacks, unless you set back ten feet. On street facing side yards of corner lots, there should be no outdoor storage within required personal building setback area. So if you had a ten foot, your house is ten feet from the street, and it's a corner lot, you wouldn't be able to park the boat there, you have to park it in the path of the driveway. Just kept it on that corner.
But if the setback is ten feet and you got forty feet, you can use a side yard place and get it.
If your house is forty feet back and you have that forty feet to park it anywhere.
That's not different from thirty feet to park it.
We added the semi-trailers, there are prohibited outdoor storage. There was a question about in home occupations on page one oh one, we added on Q, all equipment, supply, stock, material, and trailers used for landscaping, lawn maintenance, construction and lawn, or maintenance, shall be in section eight hundred point four D, residential outdoor storage requirements. So we just went back to the outdoor storage requirements. You could store things out there, it's intended to be the standard for everybody else.
You have this existing language, correct?
Everything else, the original one was existing, but we clarified it.
Right, got you there, good point.
And we also, by the way, we took out that question about no mechanical repair or service shall be permitted. It was so vague, I just took it out completely. I just took a undercurrent screening what it was saying, so we did a regulation that we don't know what it really means, it shouldn't be there.
So I took it out.
But that was, that was there already, so it wasn't something we added. There's a new form here. I think the next change is actually add agricultural. Okay, agricultural, we got to page one twenty-nine, I went back to Ohio revise code, and so I just, under horses, ponies, mules, and doggies, I had a in there, because I'm mistaken, how it might go, there's a few examples, I just followed that. We got to two, A two, horses shall be prohibited on lots less than two acres in size, I changed it to keeping the horses, ponies, mules, doggies, donkeys is permitted on minimum of two acres of pasture, because we had a question, if you had two acres and you had your house there, does that mean if your house takes up the other sort of area, you know, other things, and you only have three quarters of an acre, should you, you know, horses, should you have two horses? So we just said pasture, basically, we added pasture. So now, the only thing about that is that if you have two acres is, and you're, right now, if you have two acres and you have two horses, technically, you wouldn't, you wouldn't make that requirement.
Quick question for you, under the livestock regulations and the agricultural portion, number one, we're referring to the Ohio revise code, you're referring to Title Nine, Department of Agriculture requirements, Table eight hundred. So that's basically, well, that's section, is that just what is in the Ohio revise code? Is that stuff we draft?
There's all the sections that pertains to what was in here, that I took about the Ohio revise code. And there's a lot of information, of course, in the Ohio revise code, so if you have to go through it, you almost have to go through usually many sections. So that's why we're just putting it in the table and help people find those. And what we kept here in the back of why, why do you have to recreate the recommendations? Which is true. So all we're doing now is just doing setbacks and things like that. So that's what we did. And so we ended up also in that paragraph, which we made in front of those things, the maximum of two horses, both of which are owned by the occupant. We took own, both of which are owned by the law occupants out, and just said a maximum of two horses may be permitted on two acres. So basically, the maximum of two horses may be permitted on two acres, even the horses, ponies, mules, and bodies, permitted on a minimum of two acres of pasture. The maximum of two horses may be permitted on two acres. That causes, we almost could take that out too, actually, as I look at this. For additional non-grade, non-grade grain fed horses, we took non-grade fed horses, non-grade fed.
So now we...
Additional horses over two, at least one and one half acres of pasture per horse is required. And then we took there is no maximum limit for meat fed horses. We have a lot of tweaking in that chapter. So basically, what it says is that you have...
That's very good.
...one of pasture, and if you don't own those two horses that you're allowed, you have to have one and a half acre after that. And I think probably, when I look at this, that one, I think it was saying that, when I looked at that, was that why do you, why do the horses have to be owned by the owner? Why couldn't you have, as long as you had the acres, and you wanted to have, store somebody else's horse there, why couldn't you do it? That's why it's the owner, not the owner.
So if I'm reading this right, so you need two acres for to have two horses?
Pasture, yeah.
Right, pasture. Then you need to have an additional acre and a half per horse?
Per horse after that.
That's the way it's been going.
For each additional horse.
That's for each additional horse. That's the way it's been going.
I don't know, it seems kind of confusing, maybe if two acres is good for two horses, how do you now need one and a half for one additional horse? And I don't know if I saw it reading the code, but I'm just wondering.
I did, I did change everything, so I don't know. It's all good. So that's the way it is.
What's our existing, it's all in the law now, what's the existing law?
That's what this is.
This is it. So there's no change to it?
That's the good change, that's the change.
So you mentioned earlier that there is a clause in there about anything beyond this date, before this date is, or in front of, where was that? I didn't see it.
Let me go through that, so we didn't add it to the... We also had three, which is new to this, is that the zoning department allows less acres for miniature horses on base on a lot.
Also, the chances, we had, because the law, he was doing it, so.
What we added was, if you get to the next page, other hoofed animals, we added, keeping of other hoofed animals is permitted on lots that are at least two acres, and have at least one, one half acre of pasture, I think that is new. We added that. If we phrase it a little differently, it is, we added that. And then we added, why don't I see that here? We added in two places about the poultry. Oh, that, that, it's not, doesn't show this version here. So we went to page one thirty, which we see here, on having chickens, coops, we added, it says, coops must not be closer than fifteen feet to any lot lot or public driveway, we added unless previously approved by the city prior to the approval date of this amendment.
See, we didn't get that.
You didn't get that?
I don't believe so. The one I'm looking at is the latest one.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Yeah, we didn't get forwarded to us.
I can pass this out to you.
So that's why I was asking. And then, so, yeah, so we didn't get that.
We added two quotes.
I was thinking the same, approved by...
So how do we know if they're previously approved by the city prior to approval date of these? That's kind of a catch point too, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, I guess the question is, if you have a chicken coop that's been there, and some of them complaints, they're very concerned, they're provided, they mean, we accept it or it's asked. Because we don't have the regulations for chicken coops, that's the problem.
Right.
And so it's almost done now on a basis of...
A blank grid.
A blank grid, so. So we can't say that, you don't want to put something in there that says, we'll accept anything, you know, so you have to have a basis for it. So that's why it says basically is that, that it approved by the city. So you could make it simpler and say, if you wanted to, because if you stop it closer than fifteen feet, then you lock on a public driveway, unless, unless approved by the zoning administrator, if you want to make it simple. There's no date prior to that, it's just, it puts you in the zoning administrator, and you might not like his decision all the time, but you put it in the zoning administrator's hands.
Or it can appeal to the easy guy.
I mean, it always...
Once again, I don't, I don't know any of us, honestly, for all that. I'm not interested in creating another mechanism where people have to spend money to go get something approved that's been there for decades and stuff.
And actually, in all honesty, if I may say, you know, I know, we have really discussed chickens for many months, and I'll tell you what, we really don't have any complaints on it. I mean, the only complaint I think I ever got was down off in Nacella, there was a lady that was mad because the neighbor's chickens were always on her property. And I understand, and I think anybody, it's kind of a common sense thing, that they should be kept on their own property, but I know, we don't have the manpower or the time to go look at everybody's chicken coops and see if they're fifteen feet off the line and whatever, unless somebody's really overzealous, you know, I don't think we want that to encroach on people, but I think as far as the chicken situation, I, you know, I don't think it's as, that complex like this. And I'm saying that for the guy that has to enforce it, so.
If you want to make it, the simplest thing we can do on this is, instead of saying previously approved, if you want to, I would say you could say, if you can add this to horses too, is that coops must not be closer than fifteen feet, then you lock on a public driveway, and we can use the same, or almost similar to what we had for the solar, unless approved by the zoning administrator. I mean, you can make it real simple.
Highlight simple.
Yeah, so you can do it that way, and I mean, that's almost the way it is today without the, you know, you can do it, but we can do it that way, it says, because we have no regulations about chicken coops. You're right in a way that we don't, there's no approvals for that.
Yeah, I just want to put somebody in the situation where we didn't have regulations with approval, and now we're forcing them on something that's been existing. So if, you know, if we go to that scenario where it's approved by the zoning, would there be a document that's formally entered into our system that would be there for record keeping?
I'll have to be the issues of the zoning at that point, yeah.
All right, I'm just looking at, none of us are going to be here forever, so let's just say ten years down the road, we got a different zoning administrator, different council, and somebody hits a new neighbor, now we look at the code, and it becomes an issue.
Another thing I would say about that, I guess, with my position, is if we start issuing zoning permits on chicken coops, the first thing I've been hearing from somebody who knew that wants a chicken coop is, why is my neighbor having chicken coops that's been there for fifteen years, or is his zone protected? So I'm actually, just food for thought, and I can create some more additions. And I think if you want to really go over it, like I'm calling it.
Yeah, we're actually, the whole purpose of my conscious is to, you know, less regulation on people who's going to do this for...
That's why I can, you know, I just, that's up to the city council to...
I think, right now with chicken coops, is that it is a structure, it's an accessory of building, basically. And so it is covered under non-conforming, it's already a part of the bill. So if somebody came in, Barry, and the neighbor complains, and, oh, it's in the new regulations at fifteen feet, but they're five feet, and Barry can say, okay, well, is there prior, is there prior to the date of this approval? It is a, we listed in the table as a building, you know, chicken coops, it's all again. So non-conforming section of the code, and I was just going back, it is a legal non-conforming use. So maybe we just don't want to put anything about it, because then it starts to make all these zoning administrator, community environments, is there something? So as we talk through this, then, I think maybe the way it was stated is that the non-conformities in the code already has a building, chicken coop, so accessory, that it, that that would handle that one, because when we go to, to non-conformities, it's clear we're not conforming a lot.
Would it clean it up if under that, I'll call it poultry, or that's going to be three poultry, eight chickens, I coops? Could you make it, coops must not be closer than fifteen feet to any lot line or public driveway, unless previously, maybe something speaking to, if it was a non-conforming structure previous to this date? Does that kind of take that out of the mix? There's a non-conforming structure before this effective date, so then it's already covered? Because what you're saying is, it's a non-conforming structure, it's covered. If we could just reference that in here, where if it's a non-conforming structure prior to this date?
We can say unless it's a legal non-conforming structure. How's that? You can have whatever you have.
Yeah. What are your guys' lessons on non-allows all the time?
Define legal. More than legal.
It's something by your code.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you can have a non-conforming structure, and maybe legal is thrown along, but if you have, trying to think of a good example, you either have a non-conforming structure or grandfather, but in some cases, you could be illegal no matter what, and you wouldn't want somebody to...
You could say existing instead of legal.
Existing, non-conforming.
So an example of it, a legal will be on somebody else's property.
Or it could be something that's, it could be a real violation, a housing violation, that you don't want, you know, that there's a problem. So I like existing, non-conforming, you can just put...
Barry, are we able to see existing coops on overhead photography?
Well, the problem is with the airbills, they're using every couple of years. I mean, you could actually go back and look like, I think they had a flyover, I believe, last year, but then it's like a few years prior to that, I mean, you can't do that.
When is the last one we had? I mean, if we wanted to look and see.
I think...
Some of us are concerned about being...
Twenty years ago, I think.
Does in some county do you, is there?
Yeah.
I think we do ours every six months, I think some counties on that same program.
Are they? Because I know they do flyovers and they put it on GIs.
Probably is it the leaf, the leaf can't be, so you're not going to see that, so.
Right. Yeah, the best ones to look at are the ones that are for fall and winter, then you see stuff. I guess I kind of have a reluctance from property underlines, I, I don't know, I just, I think here in Ohio, we're a very agricultural friendly state, and I think the state kind of governs it in such a way that they don't want it overgoverned, you know, so I don't know. I mean, I'm not a farmer, but I can see that respect.
And even if we do grandfather in, section one can be closer than fifteen feet if they're, if it was existing, that doesn't override section four, which is not allowing noise or noxious odors at the lot lot, right? So...
I think it should be more, you know, definitely more complaint driven, you know, if it's something that's, you know, blatantly a health problem, or, you know, they're getting over on the neighbor's property, or whatever, I could definitely...
Yeah, those other sections are going to take care of the issues.
Do these, do these codes, do they comply to all zoning differences, like R three versus agriculture?
It's like, it's able as far as what you can do.
Okay, so for instance, the horses thing, if somebody has zoned agriculture, do they still follow this, or is there more lenience, because they...
Agriculture is allowed in CD, order one, order two.
Okay, and V one?
V one, we added V one, it wasn't there. However, I, the Vs could be done, it just sucks the property, so it doesn't need to be, well, I guess not, it would all be allowed to, you definitely have that one, because it's all agricultural.
And you said, but does agriculture have a separate for this, specifically horses?
Yes, this, this one section here we're in is all agricultural.
Okay, and this is, this is what, this is what the law...
And like I said earlier, the eight hundred point seven, is that, when we, we started this, we weren't doing agricultural, but we knew we had to because of the issue with the chickens. So while we were at the chicken, we're going to look at the Vs, make sure they're legal, and then we made some tweaking in the horses, from on V to that. So this was a pretty long process, pretty agricultural.
Right, and the good part is, most of them was carryover, because when Mark was here, Mark and I worked with Pete Chance, who was, they had a farm dealer at that time, and he gave us a lot of good input, you know, coming from a farmer or something. So we were really highly appreciative of his input, and that's why we think we got a pretty good agricultural section in there. But as Fred said, you know, a few tweaks on it, but I think it's pretty good overall. I just don't think we want to be really hopeful that he's based upon it, but I just...
On the Vs, you have to have at least a quarter, right? Now, the question that came up earlier about non-conforming beehives, you know, but those, there are reasons that we know all of how far the Vs can be from the property, or protect other Vs, so if you want to, you can put the same thing unless, unless existing non-conforming. But I don't know if that's the case, I think we can use that, because a lot of times, they're moving the hives to the locations, so.
Yeah, pollinators and stuff.
So, and the only other thing we did, because there were questions about the table on one thirty-one, we took all those subjectings out. You know, it didn't make sense, and we were repeating things in there, and so you see the crossouts, and when the table finally gets done, those crossouts won't be there, but it's just, it's just the table that tells you, isn't permitted, mostly everything is permitted, the only thing that isn't permitted, it's permitted by condition of use permitted by the academy, these things, okay? But since the table's already in there, we do the same thing. Those were the only changes that, I think we hit everything, and hell, if there's ever a change, you know, so. And as I said, is that as we're going through this code, if we catch something in the end of the year, we can always unbend that, add a little bit of things, or something that really is a problem.
Where do we land with the storage units, the, I'll call it the pods?
Well, the only thing we did with the storage units was the storage in semi-trails, that was the only change we made.
Right, we, in this, we've added temporary, I'll call it pods, like the shipping containers, that's been added. That's been added to.
We, that was in there as, um, or we call them storage containers.
They're permitted, but for a certain period of time, so we've got some people, I, I, I've seen one where the guy's turned it into an actual part of his garage. It's got a door cut into it, it's actually part of his property, so, and something like that, according to, you could enforce them, and, you know, make.
Yeah, that would be a permitted use to do that, and using it as per structural, basically.
You know, we have, you know, if you go into specific temporary structure requirements, we have, and see, one A and B, basically, gives the requirements. That hasn't changed, that's what's in the code today.
We didn't change that.
Do you have a problem with that at all?
I've had inquiries, people wanting to build, use them as storage buildings, and that which we don't permit. And then there's also people making inquiries about stacking them up and making houses on them too, but, you know, I think that's kind of a whole population too from the county.
You know, we, we kind of hold, we had a requirement without moving storage units, as long as that, I forget the name, you had some pods.
Pots.
And we had seven days, and we found that that wasn't enough. If you're moving, you, you need it to live in seven days, so. So I think we're, we're pretty good here, and we'll be around in seven days, and so. So, did that go through Congress?
I think those are everything.
They're grandfathered in, people who have.
Okay.
There are many people in the area that already have shipping containers on their property, they use it for various uses, but there was nothing in the previous code to talk about that, so they therefore would be grandfathered.
They should be grandfathered, they're not, they're solid grass.
So we're gonna do it case by case?
Well, I think we'd have to, once again, have to look at, uh, you know, how much time it's been, or when it showed up, if there's anything to do with the code, and this is effective.
Yeah, I mean, at least some of these non-conforming, you can still imagine, like, the county, GIs, I used to sometimes, you can put back all the ways, sometimes.
Forty's.
Yeah, yeah, but you couldn't really break it in, in early two thousands, late, now you can look at properties over the years and see that. And that's what Barry's gonna have to do on some of these issues, that's all.
Just, yeah.
Yeah. And then you could always work with that person too, that, you know, and we've had to do that sometimes, they had, it was out there, and you work through the issues, because usually, usually what happens is they would complain, it's complaint driven.
Right, that's ninety-nine percent what they'll do.
You always have the board.
Did I have anything down?
No, I think you guys covered it. I was just gonna echo what you guys were gonna say.
Right? Barry?
Uh, no, uh, no.
No, I think they've done their full, I really do.
Barry?
Yeah, I'd like to hear some public, of the horse, so.
Jim?
Nope.
All right, so we're in a public meeting, uh, public comments, uh, alone, so if anybody has anything they'd like to say, just state your name and, let us know who you, you know.
Um, Jim Seggio.
Your, your address, please.
My address, seventeen twenty-six Limbach Road.
I'm sorry, what was your last name, Jim?
Seggio, S-E-G-G-I-O.
Thank you.
So we have nine neighbors, and we live on a dead street, kind of, and, been here for about twenty, twenty seconds, I moved there because it was rural. Moved from Sagmore Hills, that was rural when we first went there, and then we got mixed up with building, with mass building, so we moved down here. Um, we have six horses, one mini donkey and one, um, mini horse. Our, our, uh, property is pretty much all pasture, off of the left, your fencing, and the mini donkey has no client fencing. So what would that affect us? Doing your calculation of like that, an extra, you said two and a half acres per?
Two acres.
Or we should be grandfathered a clause in, we've done there for over.
So what, are you correct on saying that?
Um, I look, I'm doing calculations, you have six horses, now, the, the two mini ones, he has the capacity to say that, you know, that, that, right now, so, so you have two horses, so you can put two horses, one per acre, so now, then the rest, the, the seven others, the code says acre and a half per horse. So what is that?
Nine acres is six point six horses.
Six point six?
Yeah, you can have six sensible fours, but that's just what the math.
So right now, is nine acres.
You're right up for that, yeah.
It's many.
You have six horses, so you're, you're fine, so right now.
Or pony.
Yeah, the many.
Well, my, my question is, I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, you know, you're sitting acre and a half of pasture. Okay, so let, I, I don't want to get, you know, I don't want to get defined pasture, if we want to know pasture is, I mean, subtle, I, is, is dry stuff, dry, what do you call that?
Dry lot. We have a dry lot. There's no grass out there anyway.
That's included in our, our acreage, so you're gonna include that acre or so of dry lot, because it's not pasture, so now you're starting to split hairs.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, the, the way it's stated right now, I have a planning commission, it just said the acreage. And then we had some conversation about that at the last meeting, uh, that maybe what if somebody had a house on that, and they had a swimming pool, and they had something else, and that took up an acre of the two acres, that, that you really still need two acres, that's what.
We're gonna handle that, I mean, I mean, the money we spend on hay, I mean, like, if you're expecting that horse to live off that acre and a half, if that's the expectation of, of that, no one's gonna be applying that, because it's a drop that we're in right now? If we're not feeding them the hay that we're spending on with grain, that's what I'm saying, we're saying.
Well, the only difference, that's the way the rule is now, half, in two acres. The only change we made is that we sort of took the house out of the, of the two acres. So that was the only, in fact, that's not even what the planning, zoning commission approved, they just did two acres. The conversation came between, after the planning commission approval and this, is that maybe you shouldn't, uh, you should have at least dedicated acreage for the horses. So that's what the revisions that we made since the last, uh, since the last meeting, we put those revisions in. But right now, the way the code says, it's the two acres and an acre and a half, that, that's the way the regulations have been since, what, two thousand thirteen?
Uh, probably what, like, nine?
Nine, so that's, so we didn't change that, we only put it in as pasture, so.
I would agree that.
But pasture, I'm sorry, but pasture, we're pasture, that are, that kind of, now, I have three acres in the back, that's wood. I mean, that, that, I mean, I have no neighbors, my, my neighbors, I got a corner.
I'm right, okay, yeah.
You're the one that I, I would say to your minute.
You're the one I talked to, tonight, you're the one I talked to today.
But, but you understand what I'm saying?
So we're not using all of our property for our horses, and we, we spend a ton of money on hay, our horses do not depend on our pasture. They don't depend on any of it. And I lived there, my, I, I lost my twenty-eight-year-old horse, Stike lived there, I've lost my twenty-year-old horse. They didn't die from starvation.
You've, you've been there twenty-plus years.
Yes.
You're, you're taking good care of your animals, nobody's coming to, to, you know, we're, we're not, we're not doing this to go out, to go after anybody. So we're just looking.
I'm just like.
You guys, you know, obviously, you do, you, you're very passionate about your animals.
Yes.
And, and that's what we want to ensure, we want to ensure that the animals are well taken care of. When we talk about having, uh, two animals on two acres, uh, not counting the house, is because we were concerned about the animals, where somebody could have, uh, uh, of their two acres, they could have, you know, three fourths of it taken up by other things. And so that's, that's where we're, that's where our concern was, is, is we want to make sure that the horses are being well taken care of, other animals are being well taken care of, and they have the room for exercise and whatever they need. And we had to put some numbers in somewhere, but, but this is, is not to go after anybody, or we're not going to come knocking on your door and say, hey, you, you know, we changed things, now you have to change, that's not, that's not what it's happening. We, you know, we, we appreciate people like you that are in our community, that do take care of their, their animals properly, and, and are passionate about it, and we want to encourage that and keep that, so, um, thank you for coming and, and, you know, saying that, so I could say that also, so.
Did you guys plan that just?
Yeah, I did, forty bucks ago.
I, I also wanted to say something about, about it just in general, because, and not to make, draw it out, because people don't know that much about horses, and the, and the whole idea of pasture and, and gauging how many horses, there is no horse in Ohio that's still living, that lives on a pasture year-round. Ain't possible. Ain't possible in the summer, ain't possible in the winter, just doesn't happen. They've gotta be fed grain and hay, or, or at least one of those, to stay alive, so the idea of using pastures as a gauge is not realistic in my mind. You could have somebody that has a barn, that has, is full of horse, show horses, and they have an indoor arena or an outdoor arena, and that's all they have, because those horses go out to work, and then they go back in their stalls. They don't need pasture. And so there's a lot of that, I mean, I used to have fifteen horses at my barn that we were showing every weekend, and, you know, they didn't, very rarely, we have some pastures, but we didn't put them out, because that's not what they were doing, they were athletes. And we worked them every day and conditioned them so that we could show them. So I guess I just want to bring that to people's attention, because that's a side of the airline business that, and, and a personal business, you know, I don't make money from it, but it's my personal business that isn't included in there.
Well, if you don't think, you, right now, it doesn't say, it just says two acres and an acre and a half. That's what was approved by the planning commissioner, so if you have questions about that, we can go back to the way.
That's right out of the revised code, isn't it, right?
Pardon?
It's right out of the revised code, the Ohio revised code.
Um, I don't know if the number of horses, but that was in our agricultural.
That's what I'm looking at, yeah, revised code, session thirteen.
So I'm like a passenger, two horses on two acres, this is about feeding, right?
Right.
Well, some people think it's about exercise, some people think it's about feeding it.
I'm sorry, I didn't get anything.
Sorry, it, it doesn't matter, I mean, because they can get exercised by being exercised every day. And, and we did not let all of our horses out in the pasture, at least not during show season, because they were being trained and conditioned for the show ring.
Now, I punked somebody that has a three hundred thousand dollar horse that never go out in pasture, with fear of injury. So, I mean, that was something I learned today, um, has nothing, but I, I, I assumed that this was for, you know, the reason why we have acreages is to make sure that the animal's well fed, okay?
Hey, can you come here and just check the hour and the code, that's what I was like. The issue was, if you have a big footprint for a house, or a car, or do other things, is that the horses don't have, that two acres wasn't accurate. But it's harder to, for Barry or anybody in the field, to say, oh, you know, someone complains, if your house takes up, you know, a quarter of an acre, if we're gonna subtract that from the two acres, so, you know, the easiest way to do it is, and you, you could say it's a dedicated area for horses, two acres. But you're saying that's not even the case.
It's not even necessary.
Yeah, so we don't have to make any, we can go back to what the planning commissioner approved about that, is, is basically, we can just take out these running backs of water for grain-fed horses.
I think if they, what I'm hearing is almost every horse in this area eats grain.
Or hay or something.
Well, well.
At some point.
D and A, yeah.
So I'm almost back to, maybe we had that, and then these folks can say, so grain fed, yeah, I gave them.
Do you, is that the way it is today?
I think you're trying to, I think maybe you're trying to say this, for the, um, give me, um, the health, the horse, the animal's health. I think that's, is that what you're trying to get at, is, because if the horse is, like, you can see the ribs and sway back, that could be because of moldings, or it could be because of malnutrition, so which, which one are you trying to get at? Is it because the horses are not being taken care of? Or are you taking acre and a half, or whatever, you know?
So I, I, just from what I interpreted being on council, the discussion came up about the acreage, and we started talking about grain fed. So me, I put that together, as we're talking about a certain amount of land equals a certain amount of food, and we can negate that if we went with grain fed or whatever. So that's where I made that connection of size equals food.
I recommend that since the, the number of horses is what Ohio revised code, at the acre and a half, the two acres. I'd say that if you feel uncomfortable with this, we just keep it the way it is, we didn't really intend to make any changes to this, we just keep it the way it is.
So, so if somebody, if somebody has, um, uh, less than, as, uh, Ms. Cook was talking about, uh, and, and not have a need, uh, if, if somebody has more animals than the size of property based on the two acres, one and a half, et cetera. What is the, uh, is, is this again another thing where the zoning administrator can make calls and say, okay, you, you know, everything's good, you know, you're, you're fine, and make the exceptions? Or, um, or it, would the zoning administrator be forced to say, our code is this, the state code is this, that's all there is to it?
Well, I think you have to follow both the code and the Ohio revised code.
Right.
Um, I think, but the, but there's no maximum number of grain-fed horses, it's sort of like, here, as you're on, card, you know, it sort of makes him.
Well, I, 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 I don't, I'm, I'm not smart enough to know what grain fed is versus grass versus hay versus that, anything else, and I'm, I'm not trying to understand that. What I am trying to understand is, uh, as Ms. Cook was, was pointing out, and, uh, and I think Mr. Wolf also, is, um, horses could be in a facility that doesn't have the, or the need for all this acreage because of them being athletes, or, or whatever the case is, that they're not going to be out in, in the pastures, and, um, so, um, again, Ohio revised code has certain limitations. Is this zoning administrator able to say, that's the guideline, but in your situation, that doesn't apply? I mean, how, how do we make, how do we make someone that, uh, doesn't need it because of, of the type of horses they have, et cetera, how do we make them legal?
I don't think we're smart about that.
What section are we in?
We are in, um.
Right.
Well, yes, absolutely.
Seven, seven point, um.
D two.
E two. So.
All right, I stand corrected on this revised code, because it doesn't say, it's got the, it's got the two acres for two horses. Uh, but then it says an additional ten thousand square feet for each additional horse.
So that's quarter acre.
That's a quarter acre, and we said, what did we say, one and a half acres?
Yeah, so forty-two thousand, yeah, forty-two, five.
So, you know, can we think about just putting in what's, what's in the code there, done that solid, making a quarter acre instead of one and a half acres? That would be consistent with the.
I, I think it's consistent with the state code.
It's consistent with the state code, get rid of pasture, don't say anything about pasture.
Says a quarter acre per horse, okay. Yeah, we can do that, because basically, we're saying, we just had extra regulations in the code today that we carried over on horses. And so now they reference the Ohio revised code, so we can just keep it the same, you know, say a quarter acre per additional horse.
I think Ms. Cook brought up some good points, because you could have a barn full of horses, and only have two acres, and those, all those horses aren't gonna use those two acres of the same owner.
Barry?
I think our fault is always dehumanizing with animals, as long as we have laws, they might even, at the time, at least, abusing the animals.
It costs too much for animal species, so people would have them, take care of them.
Right.
That's all I gotta say.
Yep, and it costs, isn't it?
Yeah, like I said, twenty-one years.
What did that horse complain about?
Well, it was pretty bad shape when I, when I followed it.
Let me ask one question, will you keep everything else the same, will you keep there's no, that, come on, grain-fed horses?
Is that in code?
Yeah, I, I would, I would.
I would say, yeah.
I'm gonna just take it the quarter.
Is it, is it in the Ohio revised code?
Uh, I did not see it in the code.
Well, no, I'm just saying, if I'm going, if we're going to follow the, the Ohio revised code on this, we should just. we should just follow, you know.
I don't have a problem with the number of horses, as long as they're care on a decent little neighbor, and they're humane and treated. So, if a person knew that in half twenty, God bless.
Well, I mean, you could take this whole paragraph out.
That's on my way fast.
I'm saying that, once we do the Ohio revised code, we're trying to do everything else with setbacks, shares. And so, we could, if you wanted not to create any confusion, we can just take that whole paragraph out.
That's the, well, or you just leave that line in about the grain fed, and deal with it as it comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Keep the exception in there, and then, you know, make them prove the exception, I guess.
So, fine, we did anyway, you guys want.
Anybody else have any horse comments?
Yeah, go ahead. I think we're getting a little hung up on the word pasture. I'm more concerned about enough space.
We're taking pasture out, right?
Pastures are out.
Well, but, but that, it seems to be what people are focusing on, that we're calling a pasture. I think there should be a minimum amount of land to have horse. Otherwise, you're gonna have people putting one in allotments, saying, "A lot is no limit." It's far-fetched. But, so, let's not hang up on pasture so much as at least a minimum amount of space for horses.
You got that out, right? Pastures out. Yes, we're doing, is it two acres and a quarter?
You have to have a minimum of two acres.
Minimum two acres.
This is true, the way this says today, it says a minimum of two acres.
That's Ohio revised code.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't do anything about, and, what Sharon question-wise is, is that, even though it says two acres, you're not dedicating two acres of horses, you should follow that for horses, because the building is carrying the horses, so that's how the change is, right? So, you have to decide, if that's how, if we're just, we're transcribing these sections every, we're not experts in more detail.
Carrie?
Carrie Crosses, Fort Treight Center. I think we're seeing by this that there are a lot of different ways of keeping horses. And if you try and write the regulations to detail every, you know, if it's a mini, if it's pasture, if it's, you know, woods, if they're competition horses, you're gonna put a drain on the manpower and time that the zoning department has to go out and measure pastures, and measure horses, and try and make judgment calls on stuff. And that's, that's a lot of extra work for our administration to do. I would vary, if you have a horse that does not create a nuisance, and does not create a humane issue, to me, those are the most important things. And ninety-nine point nine percent of horse owners are right on board with that. You're gonna have very few problems, like Barry said, one, one in over twenty years. And that can happen on a hundred acre spread, or it could happen on a two acre property. It's the person. And there already are ways of dealing with those kind of situations with the Humane Society. So, I'm a little torn on a minimum acreage for horses, because I've seen horses kept well on small property. But, you know, it is common for cities to have that. But, the other stuff, I think if you just build a general framework to keep from having problems, instead of getting into every single detail with caveat and exemption that you can. So, I hope that makes sense.
Anybody else with horse comment? Anybody for solar?
Doug Smith, 5691 Manchester Avenue, Northwest North Florence. I'm really only here to be answering questions on solar. I represent a BGM Solar. I cannot hold them. So, if anybody has any questions at all, we're welcome to answer. If not, then nice meeting everybody.
Yeah, I've got no questions on the solar. One thing I was glad to see is we're not regulating actual build types, because now you start getting into liabilities. If we're telling somebody how to build it, and there's a problem, not really seeing any of that in there.
Yeah, these are just basically, you're putting solar, we have to ask them-
Where can they go?
So, just to clarify, with the horses, we're going, the state, we're putting in here what the state says, we're leaving the paragraph in, and the paragraph's going to match the state.
Right, we'll take pasture, we're discussing two.
Okay.
Did you have it close to within the next week?
I can wait until tomorrow.
Perfect.
Can't you interliniate and make it, I mean, if you're close on the rest of this, you can, you can approve it with the changes yourselves.
You know, get back together.
But that's up to you guys.
Up to you guys.
And I will change mine. I'll cross it out to you.
Well, I'm gonna make the changes anyway. I wanna make sure that these changes made, so, yeah. But, there's really only two changes we have now. I got to put it down, actually. I put comments in my, you know, verities.
And you get the change in there about the non-conform, if it is a previous nonconformity.
We put in there, other than this here, it was, we call it-
It's an act here.
Existing, unless it is an existing non-conformity structure, that is, that includes.
I'm sure everybody's talked nothing about horses, but I just did some quick math. I could be wrong. Consistent with the revised code, they got the 10,000 feet, quarter acre. So, you guys got nine acres. And you got, okay, so, the first two acres, you can have two horses, all right? So, the other seven acres, they can have twenty-eight horses.
Amen.
That's a lot of horses.
Oh, but we would never do, I mean-
Oh, I know. I just wonder.
We're at a, we're at a limit.
I'm just, all right, I just-
Do you hear that?
Rewind this thing.
You just hit up the state and say, "Oh, for-"
All right. So, what, what do you guys wanna do? Do you guys wanna see the revised act law, or are you guys okay approving as we talk tonight? And obviously, we'll see it tomorrow.
Oh, I'm good.
I just think it'll break down.
Yeah, I just wanna say, there's a lot of work on this, and, yeah.
It was really appreciative.
It's, you know, we took some time.
H S.
Yeah. Hi. I did have a question about the home-based businesses. The list of ones that require a conditional use permit, most of those don't really seem like they would be the type that would disrupt the neighborhood.
We have, it might be pretty close to what it is today. The only reason we have it is the businesses, they could have some plastic. So, we kept it the way it was.
What table create that, so?
Sort of another one.
One of them.
One of them.
One of them.
So, Ter, your question then was on the table?
Yeah. The current, very heavy trouble, yes. The current thing, our current code doesn't have a table. It just missed a few of each type.
And that table, we did take out, because in the black blocks, there's other similar home occupation types shall be determined by the zoning commissioner. So, it's kind of duplicated, I took that out after our compensation, because there are things that, you know, there are so many different occupations, you know, throughout, it's called by SIC code, or anything like that.
These are the permitted ones, right?
Yes.
And A and B.
Yeah, although B requires a conditional use permit.
And that's the way, right now, there's conditional use permits, and the type of being, we didn't change that, basically.
Just as a general inquiry, how many type A and B permits do we have out there right now?
Oh, yeah. I think several of them I know expired, because they've either closed up or moved away. I don't, I don't want off the top of my head, was a, I'm just thinking out loud, there was one up here, the lady that used to do boat cover stuff, used to do Manchester Road up here, a little bit more than Swire, I don't remember what it was, on the inside. She closed up, she had a class B permit for that. She closed up, so that automatically, it goes away. How many changes is there anymore?
So, that's a-
Or a workshop.
So, those, those are, yeah, conditionally, so we didn't change those.
Yeah, those are unchanged.
They're unchanged, that you added things like, things were added like tutoring, knitting, that probably wouldn't affect the neighborhood?
They're separated by office use, kind of business use, and that's why they're separated. So, if somebody came down and asked and said, "I'm trying to find a house that doesn't have customers coming to it." So, if you were doing a dressmaking, and you didn't have people come to your house, you know, you could say, "Okay, there's no one coming." But what the conditional use permit is therefore, is for people coming to the house, you know, as a retail type, or a musician, or that there could be some disruption in the neighborhood. So, the conditional use permit was there, so that, if you're, if you don't need that, if there are problems, that conditional use permit, permission could take that conditional use permit for you. So, it was just a little bit of protection, if you're more intense, potential more intense type use purposes. An author, a lady who looks at my house, she's hands going, you know, so, totally different. So, there's a listing of these here, but again, you know, I always say, with home occupations, if no one knows there's a home occupation there, you're doing great. And that's, that's really the goal, is that it's a home occupation, you don't wanna disrupt the neighbors. And so, that's the first thing, is if no one can see it there, it's found, then it's good. So, but on some of these, there are, there could be some clientele coming in. That's why I have super conditional use permit there. And we did list things out of this one.
She's right.
We wanted to give listings of what, of samples, what they can do.
Where do we get the list from?
Actually, I got the list from American Planning Association, list of home occupations. So, it was called, we didn't use all of them.
And if zoning feels it won't interrupt, blow the neighborhood, they'll grant it, of course, as well. So, it's just like, like tutor, you might not think, but I went to ACT classes at some dude's garage, there was like thirty-five of us. That would be my whole road, thirty-five cars. But if it's just a little math tutor, the zoning board would have no issue granting that. But in the case where it's an ACT prep course, that has multiple students, an extreme example, but now we're knitting, we're getting rid of those extreme examples, we have a system to, mechanism automatically kicks in to filter out extremes.
That's a good point. That's regulations are always going with the extremes. I mean, that's the way regulations, it is. And so, it has an extra section, she's right, but I didn't change that. It's classified as business, so, just listen.
If I have no more comments or questions from council, detached garages, maybe you guys discussed before I got here or whatnot. According to what I'm seeing here, you went from a thousand five hundred square feet? Is that how I'm reading it? Used to be a thousand square feet for a secondary or detached garage.
What we made the change is, is that it's based on lot size. And you don't count, the code right now, if you're an attached garage, we subtract that from an accessory building attached. So, we did away with that. So, if you have a five hundred square foot attached garage, you can keep that, and then you still would build, you could build detached based on your lot size.
See, the way it read before, we were allowed a detached garage up to one thousand square feet.
Right now, any accessory buildings, I don't know where the zoning is, if, for example, it's five hundred square feet per acre, plus a hundred and fifty square feet, that's a lot, too. If you're in, if you're in a CD, it's five hundred. So, I don't know if it was a thousand for everything, was it?
I'm trying to find where it was.
Thousand square feet, and then-
But that's for-
There's a planning commission raised it from eight hundred to a thousand, and that was across the board. I was just on to you, right now.
So, you actually knocked the size down from it?
We did knock the size down, yes.
You have the idea how small a five hundred square foot garage is for a secondary building? What was the reason to reduce the size of that?
The only reason we did, there was difference, there was different required, there was service, there was service building, you counted the attached garage, then you could count the accessory garage. So, we made it simple, and said, "Okay, whatever your size of lot is, this is what you can do." So, and it was based on lot size, that's all. So, if you have a pretty big lot size, you could go, for example, if you're in an R1, you could go up to five thousand square feet, the max.
What, I mean, you can-
It would be the max would be, what is the max acreage for, so, it's five hundred square feet per acre, plus a hundred and fifty square feet, which is additional half acre, and the relative wet size is five thousand for the max. So, if you have a big lot, you could go up to five thousand.
So, what, the variance you could go larger?
Pardon?
With a variance you could go larger.
If you could always go larger, it would vary, yeah.
So, you gotta go through all the work to actually do the variance, if you wanted a thousand square foot garage.
What size lot do you have?
I got six, point six two or so acre. I'm in R2.
Okay, so you, six, six acres?
No, point six two.
Six pounds for the things involved?
Cause it's a tower, right?
So, uh, then you want?
As big as I can get.
Five hundred's not a very big building.
That's a small building.
I'm picturing my lot, I'm like you.
Twenty by twenty-five.
Good. It's not huge, but it's still fifty foot.
Twenty.
You know, I'm making-
Yeah, I don't understand why they changed it.
Well, you can go back up to a thousand if you want.
We went from eight hundred to a thousand, so we went up, and now we're literally cutting it in half. Actually, at one time, they used to allow you to have three buildings. If you had two acres, you'd have twelve hundred, and eight hundred, and four hundred. Well, I think they still allowed, at that time, they still had the accessory building like a shed, up to four hundred square feet.
It was really confusing, because it allowed, you could have a shed, you could have a garage, you could have a service building, and so, we tried to simplify. If you think a thousand square feet is fair, then we can put a thousand in there.
We need to fall within the set pack, first.
Yeah, fall within the set pack, that's, that's perfect.
Okay.
Why, I'm gonna come up with five hundred?
It's been a while, I can't.
I guess there's some industry standard somewhere relative to this. I mean, just let me ask you, I mean, I got probably about the same size you got. And I'm thinking, you know, a lot that size, I mean, there's already a house, we assumed it was a attached garage, and now we're gonna put a twenty-five foot by twenty foot building on there also. I mean, that's a pretty good sized building, no?
No.
No?
No, it's like five hundred square feet.
Well, I get it. I'm picturing, I'm picturing twenty-five, no?
But that's, that's a two-car garage, right there?
Twenty-four by twenty-four.
Okay, so, that's a two-car garage.
So, that's a two-car garage.
So, you want something bigger than that? I mean, do we want something bigger than that, or do we want to say, if somebody wants to go bigger than that- Or do we want to say, if somebody wants to go bigger than that, hey, we saw it come in and ask for variance? I don't care how you do it, but I, I'm just thinking, some of this stuff was pared down because it was old township stuff. And everybody had big lots and there weren't, you know...
They made amendments to the census, gonna say, I think they increased it.
Yeah.
I mean, you can get, for example, like a twenty-four by, figure what size it is now, twenty-four by thirty-two. And that's about, I think, about a thousand square feet. I think twenty-four by thirty-two was what it was, twenty-four by...
I don't, you know, I don't want to go back to a thousand, we can do that.
Hey, I'm comfortable with the five hundred. Uh, because again, that's a, that's a two car garage on something less than an acre. And that's, that's taking up quite a bit of space and I think, you know, but again, we, we also have to think about the neighborhood and that's why we have the, the, um, to the VCA to come in. So that the VCA will actually go out and look at the neighborhood, is this going to be disruptive to the neighborhood or not? Uh, you know, and not, not every house is, is your house, or your house or my house. So I, I'm comfortable with, with five hundred square feet. I think, again, that's a two car garage, uh, and I, Adam, I feel like that, that would be plenty for that size lot. Uh, and if something else needs to be done, come in and explain why and go through the process. So that's my thought.
Well, you have to demonstrate the fact that we would call the law.
Right.
You can split the baby and go in the middle or...
My thought is you really save the thousands, that's where we are. But that's just, you know...
You can't go into a leach field, right? Or the county's not gonna let you. I say do what you want in the property, as long as it's not hindering, it's in the backs or where, you know, it's not, it's within the setbacks. It's not at a leach because I mean, too much, it's, it's not gonna get approved for the county, you know? Since we went from eight hundred to a thousand, we've seen a dramatic drop in variance request. So that's, just for, I bet for a thousand, I bet, once you start moving around in five hundred square foot building, that's what you're doing.
Now you get a mower in there, you start getting, you can't...
Get a boat, get a boat in there. You've lost over half your garage.
Our old rule did include a thousand, but subtracted the attached garage space?
And...
Not as accessory.
Yeah, there's another, another accessory, yeah.
We could have an attached garage, you still have another thousand, a thousand, a thousand, a hundred.
And then a four hundred square foot storage building?
I would keep it at a thousand and let them shoot there. That's the problem, you have separate requirements for your building. Yeah, I, I have a slight suggestion.
You guys giving the bounty?
Yeah, this is supposed to be the reorganization, not the rewrite. Not the rewrite. It's the whole point, the focus of this.
I'm gonna have to go with that, who's a tit, should I say yes?
Oh, I'm okay with that, where, you know, we, we talked this over during the meetings, I can't remember exactly, you know? Been a while, sorry, I think it was us.
Are you okay to prove tonight, does that pay as well?
Yeah, I just wanna see if we can get that tomorrow, just to make sure. Last call and public comment? All right, with that, we will close tonight's public hearing. Move into your committees.
Hey, don't get twenty-eight. Appreciate you.
Oh, yes.
There you go.
All right, let her start our committee meeting, start off with our laws and ordinances, Mr. Wolf.
I'd like to open the laws and ordinances committee at seven fifteen P M. And it's an ordinance to amend Articles Eight and Fourteen of the New Franklin Zoning Code.
Any discussion?
I think we need to spend more time.
So I'm okay with curbing tight with the amendments we talked about, we'll see on Thursday morning. So it's on record, we talked about them, we know what we're...
Yeah, I'm happy with the, the time we spent on it, you'll have a lot of public comments, it was awesome to see people coming out there.
Absolutely.
Everybody good? Any other questions? Okay, I'll close the laws and ordinances committee meeting at seven sixteen.
All right, with that, we'll call the board of the San Diego Franklin Council meeting. Please drive in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the degree of public or justice stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call Kelly.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Shaker?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Stiles?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Almond?
Presence. I can make a motion for approval of the minutes, if we do schedule meeting, it's April fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Kelly, we have a first and a second?
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Do I have a motion to approve the financials for August twenty twenty-four, subject to audit?
They came out at two thirty-one, there's reconsiderations.
Time is requested, time is granted. All right, and public comments? Seeing none? You've got no first readings, no second readings, no third, pending legislation. Kelly, ordinance twenty-four oh, oh seven?
An ordinance to amend Articles Eight and Fourteen of the New Franklin Zoning Code.
This ordinance was brought to the laws and ordinances committee and I would like to ask for approval.
No one make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
To approve.
Prove as amended.
As amended.
Kelly, we have a first and a second?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Onto our favorite part of the council meeting, mayor report.
All right, all right, well, I'm done counting horses, so we'll go to, all right, let's go. Uh, Tutor House, music nights were a big success. We want to thank Air's Insurance and Cornerstone Benefits, they were our sponsors for that event. We have the Oktoberfest coming up, Sunday, October thirteenth. Uh, and a lot of fun out there, so please join us. The Mason's Cove will be breaking ground near the end of the year on the Event Center. We sent out the, uh, the preliminary plans on that and it's quite a structure. So it's gonna be a, another...
And what are they breaking from, I apologize?
I'm sorry?
What are they breaking from?
Well, hopefully by the end of the year. And they hope to be on the roof by the end of May and then finish it by November. Uh, on that point, um, the, well, let me comment then about the ODNR groundbreaking. Uh, and that was a wonderful event and a wonderful windfall for the city, five million dollars visitor center. Uh, I already had one comment come through saying, why, why did the city spend five million dollars on that? And we said, no, 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 we didn't spend anything, uh, but it's certainly gonna benefit, uh, the city. Um, we have, uh, we were also able, as you know, to, uh, be able to accept flow to the Zellray Plant, which, uh, I'll talk about the sewer project in a minute, but eventually it's gonna become a pump station. Uh, and we had conversations with the engineers and continuing those conversations. Uh, because now this makes, also makes it possible for the sewer hookup to the Event Center and for the Tutor House. Uh, to eliminate the subject in the leach and all the rest of it. So, and it looks like we may be able to coordinate some of those plans and, and save some, maybe some savings in that regard. Um, we have also that million dollar grant that, uh, we're talking with ODNR. And now that's, we're gonna be amused at because they're gonna be hooking up. Uh, and so that's, uh, it, it, there's a lot of details, a lot of work, but a lot of cooperation. And, and once again, I think we just further enhance our relationship with ODNR, which is such a big thing. Not just locally, but down in Columbus, as partners and the kind of things that we're trying to do. So, uh, we're excited about all that part of it. Uh, let's see. Um, the budget meetings, uh, we're gonna schedule those for the week of October seventh. Hard to believe how fast a year goes around. So, uh, we'll need to, uh, kinda get a feel from council. Uh, I think we had members of finance sat in before, although we were kinda careful and make sure we didn't have a, turn it into a public meeting.
Well, that should be, they actually advertised it, we had it out here and anybody could come for it.
That's what we did?
Yeah. Yeah, we have it sitting right up here.
We'll talk about that. I, and I'm gonna call it that, if you, if we did, we did. I thought we did those in the back.
Two years ago, we did it in the back room, actually sat out there.
Well, all right, we'll talk about which way, which approach we're gonna use. I don't know if we want to be a public meeting, but it'll be a public meeting when we adopt the budget, but, um, but, you know, we'll see. Uh, but in other words, check on your schedules, uh, you know, for how you're, you know, how you're available. All right. Uh, and again, I should, I can pause on that. That whatever comes out of the budget meetings will come before council, open meeting, plenty of time to discuss those things. Sometimes we get into sensitive matters, uh, in those meetings. Sometimes we get into future business opportunities, uh, different, the relationships with other government entities that maybe we're not literally disclosed. So I think we're gonna need to be careful about how we get it, if, you know, if we can do those things and do them publicly, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think we actually did it as a workshop, where we just, there's no public input or anything, we just sat. And I didn't actually do a roundtable show.
All the commanders, let me see. Uh, in any event, let's, you know, let, let us know, uh, well, when we get closer to it, we'll give you an idea when the department, when we wanna do it internally and then we'll let you know that and we'll certainly, it's been helpful to have council involved at that part, you know, in that phase. So that'd be the week of October seventh. All right, on a happy note, uh, September twenty-eighth is, uh, they're celebrating the one hundredth anniversary of Akron Rotary Camp. Uh, and, uh, they've invited proclamations from New Franklin, from Akron, uh, from the county, from the state. So we put together a proclamation, uh, and, uh, reciting, uh, the, uh, well, I'll try to paraphrase. In nineteen twenty-four, a couple of doctors, uh, started one week summer camp for children with polio and other physical disabilities. That's been expanded over the last hundred years and has continued in serving needs, uh, special needs for children throughout Northeast Ohio. The men and women who serve on that staff carry forward the stated mission of creating a world where there are only abilities. And New Franklin's proud to be the home of this venue. And since Saturday, September twenty-eighth, they will celebrate their achievements of the past one hundred years. We wish to join in that celebration. Uh, and now therefore, mayor and city council, uh, declare Saturday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four as Akron Rotary Camp Day. So I would ask for a motion to, uh, declare Saturday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four as Akron Rotary Camp Day in the city of New Franklin.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
All right, and, uh, let's see. Oh, well, when I was talking about public hearings, well, I'm back on end, there's one more thing on Tutor House. On October third, we filed for, as we mentioned to you before, a conditional use application, uh, in conjunction with, with Mason's Cove to continue the activities that have always taken place on those grounds. Uh, we became aware that there was some question about whether or not we were within or without zoning. It would be conditional use under existing zoning. And so in abundance of caution, we filed that. There'll be a public hearing on that on Thursday, October third at six o'clock. Speaking of public hearings, uh, there'll be a continuation of the public hearing on the Water Nine. And that will be, uh, next, Thursday, September twenty-sixth at six o'clock. And that'll be up at the Manchester United Church. Okay, same location as the first one. So that's, uh, next Thursday, the twenty-sixth at six o'clock.
Six thirty.
Six thirty is what I meant to say.
I know, I know. I was hearing it wrong.
But I always like to get there a little bit earlier. Okay. Okay, and I wanted to, uh, yeah, let you know, I'm, I'm, just another update on Sabra ninety-three sewer. Uh, we have confirmed that the numbers that we've, the, the last numbers we got appear to be the actual numbers, uh, in terms of what the cost estimates are gonna be. Um, and so, as you know, I mean, we got about, we got over ten million and it's, we're, we have a funding gap of one point eight million right now. We've got some time to address that because three million of the dollars come from the EPA. And there's, there's stag grant. And, uh, there's a lot of qualifications and it's, it's quite valuable. We're well into the weeds on that, we're gonna get through it. Uh, we, we have Arcadis working with that, so on that, it'll probably be March or so, uh, before that's approved. And then maybe another thirty to sixty days before the EPA gives us final approval and then actually frees up those funds. So that's sort of like the starting line. And all of the funding needs to be in place by then so that the county then can go forward and go out and bid, et cetera. So we're working against that timeline in terms of those additional funds. Um, there's a, a couple of different options. Uh, we've got our hat in the ring for fiscal year twenty twenty-five appropriations. We will probably know about that by spring, uh, when the federal government approves their budget. If those funds came in, then that's, that's the end of the story. The, uh, Ohio EPA has low interest loans. And I've talked to some accounting and we could, we could piggyback on theirs, uh, and, uh, cause they're borrowing three point five million. So there's that option as well. There's a, uh, there's an option where the city can decide that they wanna try to invest those funds uh, on sort of a bridge loan until we get, uh, either federal money, uh, or, and, and so it, we've mentioned, we're in the process of that. I'm interviewing a couple municipal advisors and I'll come to you with a contract, hopefully the next meeting, uh, to engage the municipal advisors to put us in a position where we can, if necessary, think about the various, uh, options to, to bridge that one point eight million. Uh, the, the, the other, and, and not to fore, there may be others I haven't thought of yet. Uh, but one is potential, uh, another one is potential developers. And, uh, the, we're, we're starting to hear from them. Uh, people are aware that the sewer is coming and know that the water is already there. And we have residents, we've talked about over a hundred acres of undeveloped land in that stretch. And so some of those, uh, landlords are starting to reach out and talk to developers. And we have one such instance that originated just that way. Uh, the landlord are talking to developer, developer coming to us. Uh, we've, we've had, we started those discussions. The developers then could be responsible for extending the sewer because right now the lines are at Renninger and Center. Uh, and, uh, and so eventually the, the lines on ninety-three will connect to all of ninety-three, but from Grace, it'll go to that location. If we have a developer who needs it sooner rather than later, uh, that developer could be responsible, uh, and, and agree to be responsible for that additional cost. So, uh, we're looking at that as another option and then, you know, that, that may come through the year before we get to, to spring. To that end, uh, it's, we're, we're at that point on ninety-three where we're, we're gonna start seeing it, it's what, what path that we wanna follow in terms of what happens out there. In the scenario, it could involve somebody who has twenty or forty acres. Uh, then they engage a, a, a developer to develop that land. And that developer is gonna come to us, uh, and request the kind of zoning, uh, that will permit them to do residential... and that developer is going to come to us and request the kind of zoning that will permit them to do residential. And you know, I think what the city is probably going to want to do is be ahead of that in a sense of talking about what we want to see where. And, but it's going to require some adjustment because that's all V1 right now. And so among the thoughts that we might want to do is think about, not necessarily rezoning it because it may turn into a spot thing, we don't know who, you know, there may be some people who don't want to rezone at all, they want to keep it V1. But there may be, we know that there's some landowners that have some property that, that would like to do some things that V1 doesn't permit. I think in a nutshell, that we're going to want to consider the attached single family, something that perhaps doesn't permit apartments, something that, that is only owner occupied. And because that's what the developers are talking to us about. We haven't heard from anybody who wants to do apartments or anything like that, they're looking residential. And they think they know where the market is, some ranches and those kind of things. And we're very early stage for this. So I just tell you that as a forecast that I think that it's an area that's going to happen. And we need to be a little bit proactive on that, I think, in terms of coming up with plans that are consistent with what was in the comprehensive plan. I don't have any specific suggestions or recommendations, but now that we're past Article 8 and Article 14, we will get into more of the substance stuff now and start having those discussions. And I'll pass on to you, you know, what we hear in terms of what the intentions of some of these developers. I think at least the conversations we've had with Fred is that consistent with 2004, the comprehensive plan update still talked about commercial upfront residential behind. And so that, that maybe there's, you know, that some section on the, on the road front would be commercial and then some residential behind that. So that can happen, it can be preserved that way. So I think we just need to, you know, further the discussion on that, but understand that it's starting to happen. And in a timely fashion, that we're not, you know, beating, there's no alarm going off. But as we all know, we haven't had a residential or commercial development of any size in the city in over 20 years. And our revenue streams are constant with the property taxes and the income tax. And if we don't have some increase in income tax, in other words, more jobs or some residential development, then eventually the expenses are going to catch up to us. Does that shock anybody or offend anybody, that concept that I just said?
No, but I wonder why we would entertain converting V1 into essentially residential. Like if we're looking for tax revenue, why wouldn't we take a harder line and make it V1 only? And make people, I mean, there's, you've seen business areas where they have, yes, the store fronts up at the street, but there's also store fronts behind them. You're, to me, it's almost like we're losing an opportunity to generate more income tax revenue versus property tax. And chances are that it's either going to be a retired person that's not generating income tax or somebody that's working outside the community that's not generating income tax.
Well, retired persons living in the house are collecting property taxes from.
Right.
All right. I mean, that's one. Number two, you can already do residential with V1.
Right, but if we're, if we're looking at redrafting some stuff and looking at how we want, how we visualize that groundwork, would there be some discussions to maybe make it a little bit more business focused than allow residential?
That would be a great idea if there are any businesses that want to come and rebuild here on State Route 93.
So they didn't want to.
I'm sorry?
So they don't have water.
Well, and I haven't heard from anybody, I haven't heard any businesses. I'm starting to hear from some people who want to do residential. And we, I don't own the land. I'm telling you what, what the property owners, who they're talking to. So I want to be clear about that, this isn't my idea. All right? We have people that own property that have talked to developers who want to do residential. That's all I'm saying.
And residential brings businesses. So when we have people that are available to shop those businesses, when we have more people, businesses will be more interested in coming. So as, as the mayor mentioned, possibly, again, we don't know anything that's happening, possibly where we have the businesses front residential and the back businesses will be more willing to come if there's more of a customer base for them. So, I mean, it's just there, there's so much and we know nothing at this point. So just have to keep our, our mind open and see what was presented, if anything.
Mr. Powell, I think you're the one who mentioned to us how many residents already won before they were built. And it was how many?
I, I forgot the number.
It was a footprint, it was a travel.
Yeah, we all do understand that.
Right, I did that.
Okay. And that's what brings the.
I'm just looking, I'm just seeing this as like our premium property, the, the opportunity.
And again, it, it's not ours, it's.
Right, I guess.
I want, well, it's, it's good, I guess, that we started having these conversations. My only concern is to make sure one or the other of those things happen. Because if they don't, then we're going to have difficulty with these expenses five, six, seven, eight, 10 years from now. We all understand that, don't we? It's not a marriage, I hope they come. If they don't come, there's going to be, it's, it's, you know, a simple man. So, and I want us all to be on the same team with this. Not my idea, but I think collectively we have to embrace that for the good of the 14,000 people. If we can stick our head in the sand and do nothing and wait for people to show up, you know, or, or we can do, you know, what our duty is, our responsibility is, you know, is to, you know, be proactive and, and in a constructive way, inconsistent with whatever it says, and that's, that's exactly what will happen. We're not going to see Walmart, you know, we have no highway. You know, these are, these are things that potentially will happen because we're fortunate enough to live next to a 400 acre state park and we've got, I know Ohio and Erie Canalway down there, we've got the kind of things that are attractive to people. We've got a community that people want to live in. And, and then when those things come, then we'll see a drug mart and maybe an Audis, you know, and, you know, so we'll see some of those businesses. We're not going to get, we have no highway. We're not going to get a manufacturer to come in here and get 200 jobs on, on State Route 93. I mean, there's no highway, so that's not happening. But maybe we can get 10 businesses with 20 employees. We've got Campbell Oil sitting over here. When the sewer comes, they've already indicated, we got letters of support from them, that they're going to add a restaurant and they're going to add probably 50 jobs. So those are the kind of things that will happen, but more of, so that's, that's really, that's the reality of the situation. And, and so again, I bring it up just to try to keep you up to speed and we'll see what comes down the pipe. All right, and let me see, what else do I got? Last thing I got, I sent you guys the code and trying to figure out the best way to go through this and talk about maybe going chapter by chapter. And I think it might have been Mr. Wolf who mentioned, you know, most of it is in a revised, well, high revised code anyway. So I invite you to continue to work your way through that. And I tried to give you a little score sheet that's kind of suggested what each one of those, there's nothing really exotic in there. All the code stuff is the stuff we're citing under right now anyway. So if we can, I just mentioned again to try to keep working your way through that part.
I understand the reward of it. I couldn't believe it, that all the money goes to Columbus, so, but we would get it if it's our city, right?
Yes.
What is the risk, what exposure does the city have by doing that? Is it?
Seems too good to be true.
Right. Well, that's, I mean, we're the only ones that don't. Okay? I mean, every city has their own code, we just, it never happened here in Franklin.
We would keep, what do you, is there an estimate on what the potential revenue or fines or, you know, are we talking?
It's not going to be a huge money maker.
Of course.
No, no. As much as anything else, I think it's just a matter of trying to be a grown up city.
Right.
You know, that's part of it. But otherwise, it's the same, you know, it's, it's the same language of the revised code. And we don't have any additional exposure. We've talked to the clerks in Harvard and they don't care. It's not like, you know, it, it matters not. And that's one of the kind of stations we have. So, you know, but I'm not aware of any city that doesn't have its own codified ordinances in Summertime. So, all right, that's all I got.
Finance report, Sue?
I just wanted to bring up the fraud topic again, because the, because the auditor asked me to. Because of you, of your paperwork that you had to do for the auditors, that they said that perhaps since a lot of people are new, maybe they don't understand the whole concept of some of this stuff. So, and I know we talked, for those of you who've been here a while, we talked about this not too long ago. Basically, aside from your eight minute video, fraud has to do with how we try to avoid there being cases of fraud or giving people possibility to be, to be, to do fraudulent things, to better secure our finances. And we do have things in place. And one of the things in place, although you may not know it, are those reports that you get because that shows the money coming in and going out. You have, you know, you look at that every, it shows you the bank reps, everything on the bank reps that comes in and out. So, so that is, that is part of your responsibility, obviously. But also there are other things that we do internally as a part of that and also by, by the request of the auditors. For example, when we take in money at a different department, they receive it on their department receipts. Then that receipt and that money goes to our office and then we receive it back to that department showing that it has traveled from there to here, that it's the same amount before it gets actually received into our, our VIP, our program. So those are kind of double checks to, on the money trail to show that things have done and gone where they're supposed to do, where they're supposed to be. We also have things in place for the kind of crossover of duties. For example, Karen does the majority of putting in all the receipts. However, I do the bank rep, which means I have to look over all the receipts, make sure they go in the proper place, make sure everything adds up. So there's cross-overs of a lot of different duties to make sure that there isn't fraud. The most likely places that fraud would occur would be in areas where money is taken in. Like our Tudor House. And like, like our service department because they take in a lot of money. The fraud department, police don't take in much money. Those places, that's why we have that double, you know, double invoicing and that kind of thing. Those, so those are the areas that we keep, you know, we, we try to keep as organized as we can so we can make sure that we get all the money in that we're supposed to, that we don't, even with the petty cash that we use is counted not only at the bank, but here and then counted when it's been into, Katie, for example, when she brings it back, it's recounted and it's also deposited at that same. So we have those processes in place to try to avoid any type of fraud. But not that everything can be, and there's always people out there that like to do things that are not nice. But we try our very best and we do have things in place and procedures that try to keep that from happening. And you, of course, have your part in all that of overseeing that. So I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of those things. And if you ever have questions about the trail of things, please ask because there, there are specific ways in which we do things. And sometimes people think that those are integrated or slow, but they're not. They're, they're, there are things that the auditors have, have asked us to do in order to secure the processes that we're doing. So if you have any questions at any time, of course, please come and see me. But I wanted to make sure that for everybody that hasn't been here, that you were all updated on, on that kind of idea of fraud. And you will get those every time, every year, if we are audited every year, you will get those same kinds of questionnaires. They make sure, tweak them a little bit every year for that, for that purpose. So I wanted to make sure that you fully understood all that. So like I said, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, it was really informative this season. I don't think we've ever done anything funny and it was very thoughtful.
Thanks.
And it covered so many things and I think they are really important.
We having your business?
Couple of things, earlier this year, we talked about getting the all the boards' video on Facebook and things. I'm not sure if Mr. Henson, the MAFC meeting. And Dr. Robert, he said he asked him if, if we can do something like that to get all the other boards up in the MAFC, so everybody can see him, maybe get more people involved. What do you think about doing something like that?
Troy had talked in the past about upgrading our, our equipment to, to make it, where we have better video, better audio, which is the most important thing. And we were looking at paying some prices, but I don't know if we can move forward on that.
Yeah, I got some prices for the owl cameras and some stuff. And I think you guys are going to get a second price on that, I don't know if you guys have a hold on that.
I don't know. Did you send yours out to us?
I sent this to you.
Yeah, okay, good. And then I talked to Robert about that and he's going to double check on that end.
Yeah, I did check and the prices that he gave were in range of what other companies are asking for the same type of setup.
Whatever's easiest for you, just click a button.
Just wanted it to happen.
Well, I think we want more than just make it happen. We want, I think it's important that we understand what we're doing and what we're getting and what, what the results of it are going to be. We can spend money and get cameras all over the place, but it's not necessarily going to improve the process any. When we come to, to a board meeting, we have people coming up and giving their presentation or, or giving their testimony, whatever. If you're sitting back here, you can't hear anything. You, you really don't hear what, what conversations are going on. And so if we're going to broadcast it on, on, on the web, you know, we need to make sure that people on the web can hear it and people in the audience can hear it also. We have, when we have those meetings, we don't have any visual aid for the people sitting out there or the people sitting out, out there in space to see what's being talked about as far as the plans or, or things like that, which I think would be hugely important and awesome. So I, I, I think, you know, is, we got, we got a bid and certainly appreciate that. But what, what is that actually going to do for us? How is that going to improve the process for everybody, improve the meetings for everybody, improve all, all the meetings being put out on the web? And I think that's important also, I agree.
Yes, when we originally talked about that, our, the original scope was to get some owl cameras. They focus in on who's talking, some additional microphones. And they basically automate the system so anybody could come in and anybody who has access could actually start that video process and go to a live stream. You've kind of changed the scope there by having the visual aids and stuff added as well, which would be additional quotes for that type of service. So when I said just make it happen, I, I thought we were remembering what the scope was.
Well, I would like to see whatever we do, I mean, just adhere, well, it'll do this, it'll do this. I'd like to see a demonstration of exactly what it will do. You know, I mean, that just makes sense. You test drive a car, you know.
You'll have to go somewhere it has.
Well, sure, so we, we need to know where that is and, you know, stuff like that. So I just.
Council field trip day, I love it.
Any other real business?
I got one other thing, talked to Mr. Kepler about the cemetery cleanup. Cemetery rumors have been posted for the notice of out removing those things that are now a lot of the cemetery as of November 1st. So we talked about getting a cleanup day there sometime between the 2nd and Thanksgiving. He's going to be on vacation here for a little bit soon, as am I. So we're supposed to get together and kind of set some days up for that volunteer.
I have two things I wanted to bring up. One, yeah, we had talked a while back about the 619 corridor, K. Any status update on where that stands or any progress or anything along that theme?
Yeah, the OHM was selected as a consultants to proceed with that. The AMATS, the contract with them had to be drawn by AMATS. AMATS uses Akron's law department. So I have not heard from, from AMATS, but I did hear from Josh that it appears that contract's about ready. So once, you know, once that's, they'll start their, their process. And the initial part of it is an information gathering and, and then it will blossom into some public meetings. And so we've got a. So we've got a committee on standby of some local residents, business owners, and we'll get them engaged and then we'll get the entire, you know, the public engaged as well as that rolls out. So I think in six to nine months, they figure it will take and hopefully we'll start and have some time in November or so. But the timing is good because it's, I mean, timing is divine. We were able to obtain this grant to take a hard look at at 619, depending on what does or doesn't happen with the water line. I mean, for instance, you know, there's the questions about that that intersection where at at the golf course, Point Comfort, you know, is it is it sufficient? Well, there's going to be another set of eyes looking at that as with this with this planning team. So and and that's the timeline, I would think, hopefully 30 days or so, we'll reach a point where there'll start to be 30, 45 days in public involvement.
The other item I had was we had some discussion a while back and we just had a board meeting, where are we with talks or concepts that everybody walking through other access to?
We have, and we we talked about this last evening, we had preliminary meetings, again, we engaged OHM for that purpose, really just to give us a site plan for the walking trail. Based on our discussion, they've been kind enough to expand it into a really look at the whole campus over there. And we have two, two options that have been identified, they they provided a couple different choices. We had a meeting here with as many of the parks people as could make it and invited some council and and essentially we're not going to do anything exotic or at least what what they proposed is basically going to be an oval and it's just the the two options are going to be perhaps one option will be we would go just, it may be three, just to the to the, let's see, the north of the tennis courts as it goes around or just behind the tennis courts or then all the third option is all the way around the soccer fields, but it would be and which would involve some school property. It would not go east of Brokaw Lane or that access road. So in that sense, it's not going anywhere near the middle school or anything like that. So they are drawing at a, we'll have a final look at that and then there'll be a public presentation to include counsel, everybody else, to get some feedback and see what we think. And then there'll also be some cost estimates of, you know, asphalt versus crushed limestone and I've had conversations with a couple of school board members, the president and also the current superintendent and advise them and we've talked to them all along, even with the processes and I've gotten support from them, they think it's going to be a good thing.
Is that something that's a digital version, we can maybe forward out to you so we can just get a kind of idea of it?
As soon as I get it, I'll share it, for sure.
That's all I have for old business, anybody else?
Ken, I'd like to step back to the owl cameras. I volunteer as a CASA guardian ad litem for the Court of Special, Court of Point and Special Advocate for Southern County Juvenile Court and they have owl cameras in all of the courtrooms there, which some of them are very similar to the setup we have here. They do work pretty well and I have a contact there that can give us a tour if you want to see what they do and exactly how they work. I had a good feeling we had to set that up.
Any new business?
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought I was. I want to mention the farmer's market again, you only have two more Thursdays and I do have a client that bought multiple produce the last time at our last farmer's market and braved about it, am I right, Kevin? Thank you very much. So there you go.
And speaking of produce, we are looking for donations for pumpkins again for the Oktoberfest.
Oh, neat.
Because as you know, we have we have kids decorate pumpkins, so.
And how many pumpkins do you need?
That's an excellent question. 50?
Don't ask me, Kate probably knows.
Let's go with 50.
Okay, I'll call Katie tomorrow, Randy and I will be doing.
Ah, okay, good. Excellent.
Oh, and thank you for the popcorn, we're missing a hundred of the farm.
Well, you know what, I'm going to tell you, we are going to be traveling popcorn, we're going to the Oktoberfest with popcorn too.
Beautiful. How about you?
I know, I may I may not do it during the winter months, I may take a hike, but I'll be back this year.
Appreciate it.
Any new business? All right, Sam, any follow comments?
Sharon Goodwin, 678993. I forgot to mention at the last council meeting to thank council members and community member staff for opening the local scout, thanking breakfast, all proceeds, you go to the scouts that work and also for some of the, I appreciate it. And I wanted to touch on walking trail, here Adam seems coming about years down the road and watch expenses that are going to come up. There are so many things happening now, so many new things that are going to be placed that at some point this stuff is all going to start to need maintenance and repairs and I think we need to be mindful of that, the case that we're looking at doing and what we want to do and keeping all that in mind that at some point, those expenses are going to become and maybe not be quite so much. As a walking trail, we have a half mile and people can go around it twice, it's half the maintenance, half is the impact. Thank you.
Are you all?
The chefs at the boys' camp breakfast did an amazing job and the boys were great too, but potatoes were awesome.
I don't root potatoes, but sausage was delicious.
I always look forward to it.
Did a great job, I think.
All right, we'll close all the comments. I believe we have a need for executive session. This is going to be to review negotiations and discuss conversation of public employees. Got a motion, do you want to?
Motion?
Yes, sir. Second, Tony?
Okay, we're moving on. Move of negotiations and compensation of public employees.
Correct.
All right, we made a motion.
I did.
Here is the second, yes.
Mr. Pash?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
I feel like I really did appreciate you Brian buying that. I didn't need to choose one, I really appreciate you.